Hi, I'm Ginny Lauren Dowden for Conduit News. And today we have Washington County current planning board member Lisa Miller joining us in the studio to talk about the proposed zoning ordinance facing Washington County residents. Lisa, thank you so much for coming in today.
Thank you for having me. I greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Well, I think that it would be wonderful for our viewers and for Washington County residents to hear from a planning board member. There is a lot of discussion about this proposed zoning ordinance that just people need to understand more, especially considering that it's coming up for a vote potentially soon. So before we talk about that, though, just briefly tell us who you are for our viewers, obviously a Washington County resident, and just a little bit about yourself.
My name is Lisa Miller, married in Arkansas, from Murfreesboro, Arkansas. Whose great-granddaddy and great-great-granddaddy were medical doctors, country rural medical doctors, and he grew up with that type of a background. I'm the big city girl from Houston, Texas that married the small-town country boy. So there we go.
That's wonderful. And then how long have you guys been here in Northwest Arkansas?
About 14 years. We've had a medical practice in Athens, Texas, and decided that we were ready to retire and came up here to view the senior walk at U of A to see my husband's name in the senior walk. And it was under construction. We didn't even get to see it. But it was my first time to Fayetteville. We brought our daughter. It was her spring break. The weather was great. The people were nice, and the real estate market was severely depressed at that point. And I advised my husband, if this is, if you want to retire back to Arkansas, now's the time we need to be doing it because this is like a baby Austin, Texas. I feel it. I feel the vibes coming on. And sure enough, that's exactly what's happened here. It is booming here.
It really is. And so you've been on the planning board for how long? I know that your term is ending at the end of the year. So how long have you been serving?
This is my fourth and final year. I have offered to re-up for four more years should current administration desire me to serve. I'm willing to serve. It's a feeling of giving back to the community. When I was first signed on with this was Judge Joseph Woods. I thought it was a volunteer position. It almost is. We get a little bit of money to show up and perform, but I really thought out of a sense of community service, I would serve, and that's why I do this, is to try to give back to my community.
Well, let's talk then about giving back to the community, helping them understand what's going on. This is quite the overhaul regarding the zoning ordinance. It's, I believe, over 150 pages, a lot of moving pieces. Talk to us from your perspective first, just about this proposed zoning ordinance.
I had the opportunity to review this in depth yesterday. I took most of the day to go through it. It's quite extensive. I've got two giant packets marked up, posty noted up, have a lot of questions, but I see a lot of things in here that I really don't like. My background is conservative. This is not conservative from what I'm looking at at all. This is bigger government, not lesser government, more government overreach versus lesser government overreach. It's concerning the citizens of Washington County who live and purchased in Washington County or inherited in Washington County. I get the feeling and the vibes from this that this is city of Fayetteville trying to Washington County, trying to city up my Washington County. It's not anything I want. My husband and I own two pieces of property in Washington County. One abuts an ultra-wealthy subdivision. We're not D-restricted where I am, but we abut that. My other property is lakefront at Beaver Lake, and people have boats at Beaver Lake. A part of this legislation had to do with you can't park your trailer in the yard, you can't park your boat in your yard. Washington County has some people that live lakefront at Beaver Lake, and I don't think this is going to go over real big with some of them. It's the county. We expect that. Are you expecting the people to put your boats and your trailers into storage and pay for a storage fee every month? I think it's overreaching, and they haven't really looked at the whole picture of all of what encompasses Washington County. And that's just one thing.
Yeah, let's dig into it then, if you would. You have so many notes, and I love this. As you're looking into it, what are, you mentioned there's government overreach, we're telling people what to do with their land, it's not our job to do that in some way. And so as you're looking at this, flipping through it, what were some of the, like, maybe three or four big overarching points or red flags that you saw that, that you think even people don't know right now?
Well, right off the bat, I think the title of this thing is a total misnomer. I just, the title of it is very misleading.
Well, and we've talked about that. So full disclosure, as you know, Joe Maynard is on the planning board currently. He's also co-founder of Conduit News, big advocate for limited government and protecting your personal property and just property rights. And that was one of the things that he said from the beginning. He said the title of this, which is, I believe, read it for us.
The Freedom and Property Preservation Zoning Act of Washington County.
He says?
And this is anything but.
Okay.
No, it's anything but. This is not what we're looking at. And it goes on to say that the very second paragraph of this document states, quote, that it, quote, "better protects the rural parts of Washington County, allows for actual zoning and rezoning in property, and is generally more advantageous to the citizens of Washington County." And it is not advantageous to the citizens of Washington County, period. When this was presented to us at an open public meeting, which Brian Lester, the county attorney, headed up, he himself used the word when he was describing this document as a scheme, and he used it more than once. And I thought, that's kind of strange. Why is the county attorney presenting this in this way? Might it be? And then the meeting was abruptly ended. He walked out of his own meeting. I had some questions. The other zoning members had some questions. We didn't have the opportunity to even ask any questions, and he was gone.
Yeah. What questions did other member? I watched that. I've watched all of their recent meetings. A lot of them seemed to be cut short, no questions asked, again, which speaks against to the accountability and transparency that we should have with our elected officials. But what are you hearing from other, maybe JP's or planning board members? What questions do they have?
I didn't get the opportunity to hear their questions, which is why I went. I wanted to have that opportunity to learn and to field some questions, and I was not given that opportunity. And it's so sad. This is our government.
Right. Okay, let's talk about maybe some of these three or four key pieces that you think Washington County, and again, this is 150, 170-plus page document.
Yes.
So we're not going to be able to go through, you know, every single thing, but if you were to pick out, you know, some of the main points that you would want Washington County residents to be aware of, what would that be?
Well, one, as I'm looking on page 68, under administration and enforcement, they're going to have to hire some people to get to pull this off and to get this done. And it goes so far as to call this person a zoning official. And it says, "The zoning official may enter any structure, premise, or land to perform any duty imposed by this ordinance." So what happened to property rights and no trespassing and us being able to control what we do with our own land? That's out the window with this. A few other things, and going over to page 72E, non-conforming structures and uses. Let's talk about ham radio operators and communication towers, for one. There's a few ham radio operators around. Yes, they have big towers. There's a whole section of this that tries to regulate the towers that they want to have. They're willing to waive the fines, but can they really afford to do this? And how are they going to regulate it? And do you really want ham radio operators regulated in this manner, push come to shove? The other thing is, is having, being able to start a business in your home. There's a part on this page, 82, item 3A5. "Permitted home occupations shall not include the employment of any persons not residing on the premises in the performance of the occupation." My husband and I started our own multimillion-dollar business off the kitchen table. This would have knocked us out right off the bat. I had registered nurses coming to my home, getting their assignments and going out to treat their geriatric patients in the field. That wouldn't have been good. The other thing, as already mentioned, was the boat trailer issue for the lakefront Let's see. "Driveways and access. Access to property shall be allowed only by way of driveways, and no other portion of the lot frontage shall be used for ingress or egress." Well, I live on a property that has a limited access control gate. If we get a freeze here, I open my gate. When I open my gate, it freezes open, but I can get in and out if I need to, if I'm lucky enough to get up the iced road. If I have an issue or my gate goes down, I have a pipe gate, which is on the right-of-way for Ozarks Electric. Ozarks Electric and I want to be able to get out of that pipe gate. This is specifically telling me I can't get on and off my own land, driving across it and exiting on a pipe gate. It makes no sense. There's not a whole lot of thought going into this. Let me explain to you guys what I'm seeing as well, too. We get to a piece of this to show you how rough this is and how quickly this is trying to be rushed through. There's a section in here having to do with sexually-oriented businesses, otherwise known as SOBs.
Yeah.
I think maybe whoever was putting this together either didn't know how to use spell check, maybe they got flustered at the thought of sex, the word sexual. I don't know. But the whole document, the whole front page of this is misspelled.
It is.
It's bad.
Right.
So that pretty much in a gist of it is it. I think it's government overreaching their bounds. It's not healthy for Washington County. Please don't Fayetteville my Washington County. We don't want to go there.
Yeah. We have an attorney right now. This was a comment that was brought up from one of the Washington County constituents, and you've heard it if you've been watching the public comments. People have been saying, you know, the document is ever-changing, if it's even available online, we can't see the interactive map, we're not able to tell what's current and what's being changed. And so conduit is actually, we're having someone go through, an attorney, line by line and red line, and show those changes just so Washington County residents can know what, you know, what that looks like. And really, that should happen anyway, that the Washington County, they should be doing that, showing those red lines. But that was one thing that they talked about often was, don't Fayetteville our Washington County? And I want to read to you, and for our viewers, several of these citizen comments. A lot of it has to do with how beautiful Washington County is and why people move here in the first place. One person said, "I'm perplexed about it because people come to Washington County for the unspoiled natural beauty. If we rezoned a commercial all along these roads, then we get away from the CEP's, conditional use permit process, by which property rights of existing landowners are respected." Another person said, "It's wrong-headed for the rights of existing landowners." And one has to ask, "Why would you want to do this with the gem of Northwest Arkansas? Do we want sprawl? Do we want commercial sprawl everywhere? We've got places for that." Someone else said, "This will replace our rolling pastures for us with pavement and commercial buildings, such as those on Highway 412 East of Highway 71 in Springdale. Take a moment, visualize the effect of this being repeated in small communities and rural areas throughout the county, which most likely they don't even know this is happening." And these comments went on and on. Why do we need the rush? "I'm here to express grave concerns. The blanket overlay of commercial zoning along all state highways is irresponsible and exemplifies bad land use planning." You're on the planning board. Where did this come from? Why is it such an overreach and overhaul to where we have residents? I really haven't heard anyone in support of this. Where is this coming from?
I really truly don't know where this is coming from. I think it's overreach in the highest level. I don't know if it's a political donor that's a land, wealthy land developer, someone older with a lot of money that wants to control what people do with their land in Washington County. I really don't know who's behind this. I have no clue, but I know it's not right for Washington County. And I've always had a saying, "If there's something going on next door that you don't like, buy it." If you're not the lead dog, the scenery's all the same. If you want to be the lead dog, go knock on your neighbor's door and see if they want to sell it to you. They might. You never know. But to try to control through this is wrong. It's not what I signed on for.
How, in your opinion, does this change even the planning commission and what a planning board member, what their role is moving forward?
This is what I think is going to happen. Whoever is behind this, I'm smelling maybe political donations. I really truly don't know who's behind it. But the board is, I'm probably will be replaced, even though I've offered to serve four more years. I'm probably going to be replaced by somebody who wants this passed. It's going to be a yes person for this getting through that has got some monetary reason to get this through, and I don't know who that person may be or why.
At Conduit, we've talked about this frequently and most recently, and we published the role of the planning board and what that looks like. And, you know, these comments, what we said, they were right on the money, and it reinforces the role of the planning board. And some would say that the planning board and members really don't have much say and control over what has been proposed.
We've got no say and no control over what has been proposed. We have been asked for no input. When we had the meeting with the public, we weren't allowed to ask questions. It was abruptly ended, and the attorney walked out of the courtroom. That's our government at work, and I'm not liking what I'm seeing, and I don't know why they're behaving in the manner that they are.
You've been on there for four years. You mentioned that you were appointed by then-Washington County Judge Joseph Wood. Have you noticed a shift or change in the way government is operating now?
Absolutely, I have. I have.
What does that look like?
I'm seeing someone that had, appeared to have true conservative Christian values that walked the walk and talked the talk. He lived what we saw in the way we were treated and handled as people and servants of the community and of Washington County. What we have now is someone who I don't think really wants to hear from us, for whatever reason. Maybe there's political aspirations, higher aspirations than Washington County judge involved in this. I just don't know, but I'm seeing a big difference night and day between the two. Maybe it's Rhino, Republicans in name only, but it's not what my background and my family history tells me is going on to be right. It's just not right. But doesn't pass the sniff test? There may be something there. I just don't know, but I'm not feeling it. My gut, female intuition is telling me something's just not right, and you got to listen to your gut.
We also say this often, we as citizens don't need to justify why we should be doing something. If anything, the government must justify why we should be permitted. And this massive document, as you mentioned, just seems like government overreach, and we're going to be telling property owners on the smallest level of what they can do. And I would also argue that a lot of Washington County residents don't know what's happening right now, and there's a big rush to get this passed. What would you tell residents, for those who are just now learning about this?
This is quite extensive. Some of this, when it gets down to the engineering parts of the curbs, the gutters, the antennas, it's over my head because it's engineering, but the basic gist of this, even with a high school education, you can get through this. You're probably going to have some, a lot more questions than I even have, and I'm well-educated in this. It's going to take some time. It took quite a bit of time. And I'm being told that there's no rush to this. This has been going on for a long time. Well, maybe in different forms it was going on for a long time and being thought about, but this, as it stands, with this crazy type of graphical errors even in this, how much time did somebody really spend when they were actually putting this together and thinking about it before it got released for public consumption? Not a whole lot. There's something going on here, and I'm not liking what I'm seeing.
I mentioned to you a second ago, I had a local pastor in, and we were talking about the current political landscape. We were talking about just churches now and how even believers, some people are worried to speak out, whether it offends someone or whatever it may be. But we've also noticed that in our government with elected officials, public servants, who no longer feel comfortable expressing an opinion, being in a planning board meeting and saying, "Hmm, I have some questions. This doesn't pass the smell test, and here are some issues that I have," especially as a landowner. And that is discouraged now, and people fear retaliation for speaking out that way. Do you sense that at all? Are you, you know, you're, as we mentioned, your term is coming up, so maybe perhaps you're not that worried about it anymore. But do you see that at all?
Absolutely, I do see that. And my term is expiring. I put in writing to the county judge that I was willing to serve another term. About two months ago, I notified him so I could make plans with my life and what I want to do, because this does take some time. And I haven't heard anything back, so I'm assuming he probably doesn't want me.
Lisa, I think you are.
I really don't know, but I am in direct opposition to this, which puts me in the crosshairs of this county judge, and it's not a real comfortable feeling to be in the crosshairs, but I'm not one to back down.
And we need more of that. We need more people willing to do that.
Well, thank you.
Stand up like that.
I just don't know any better. It's some personality.
We don't either. At the October, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, the September 19th Coram Court meeting, this zoning ordinance was placed on the agenda. It was added and sponsored by Justice of the Peace Lisa Eckey. And these comments that I read earlier came from that particular September 19th meeting. After those comments were made, it was then said, "Oh, well, we have no, there was never any intention of passing this or voting on this today. We're so sorry if for however, you know, however you got that impression, it certainly wasn't because of us, but we didn't, you know, we're just here for discussion." Although, for the average person looking at an agenda, if something is sponsored and placed on the agenda for a vote, you think it's going to be up there for a vote.
Absolutely.
So I want people to understand that had this ordinance passed the 19th, it would have become law. It was on the agenda to be voted on. However, I think because of public pressure and public comment that day, a JP referred it back to County Services Committee. Do you think that this is something that needs to be, and while they say we're not rushing through, we know that, that multiple people have said that they want to get this passed before January? Is that wise to do?
Why does this need to be passed before January is my question. Why does this need to be passed at all? The system that we have, that I've served under for four years, works. It may not be the best system. It may not be the cleanest system. We take these cases on a case-by-case basis. We listen to the citizens of Washington County, and given the board's backgrounds, our knowledge, what we know from the business world and living here, we try to make the best-informed decision we can and vote in the manner that we, as a gut feeling, feel is best for that particular situation. This, as it stands, you could end up in jail. And it says that in here.
Right.
It's not something we really need, a road we really need to be going down. And yes, had I still been serving on this board, absolutely I would feel threatened by what I'm seeing. There's a letter floating around about another one of my board members calling into question his ability to serve. That same thing could happen to me because I disagree with who's in charge. It could happen to me, too. And if it can happen to me, guess what? It can happen to you, too. Beware.
This reminds me, and I don't know if you were following it or remember it, but last year, I believe, last fall, around September, there was a special session in the legislature, and they attempted to sneak in a Freedom of Information bill that would have really stripped all of the access that we have to records and things that happen in our government, which we are entitled to. Many legislators said, "Oh, well, you know, the process right now is so cumbersome, it's so difficult." You know, this would make, I had one legislator say, "I thought that you would be for this. This would make government more efficient." It's like, if we wanted government to be efficient, we wouldn't even have you guys in the first place.
Right.
But that's what this reminds me of, that, you know, not saying that there's necessarily, and the board member that you mentioned, Joe Maynard, he was on here, he talked about this, and he said, "I'm not saying that there's anything necessarily nefarious about this ordinance." He said, "But, you know, what are we doing?" He said, "This is, we shouldn't pass this just for the sake of saying we want to make government more efficient." He said, "Freedom is messy. The process, as you said, it may not be perfect." He said, "But it's what works, and it gives people the freedom that they, that is rightly theirs." What do you say to that?
I'm a big proponent of property owners' rights, and I agree with everything that was said just now.
You briefly mentioned one of your current planning board members, Joe Maynard. As we mentioned, he's a co-founder here at Conduit. He has been very vocal in speaking out against this proposed ordinance. The night before the October regular Coram Court meeting, our county judge, Judge Patrick Deacon, sent an email to all JP's, basically saying that he lacks confidence. He no longer has confidence in Joe Maynard. At that meeting, his attorney, Brenda Vassar-Taylor, she came to the meeting and cautioned the JP's and said that Maynard can only be removed during his term, only for cause, and he deserves due process. And she characterized Deacon's comments about Maynard as slanderous. What, just what is, you serve on the board with him. What is your thought about this?
I'm not an attorney, but I can tell you what I see as a board member. I see a man that works really hard. He shows up to the meetings. He gives thought to what comes before us, and he votes the way he feels he should vote. Do he and I agree on every vote? No, we don't. It's just part of the process. But I was surprised to see this document come out on Washington County stationery stating and alluding to some board members, I don't know, is maybe his demeanor he was bringing into question. As a registered nurse, the only one that can diagnose a medical problem is a medical doctor. We can assess his nurses, but I don't think that was right to do. As a formal business owner with a lot of employees, that should have never left that judge's desk. He should have thought about that before he sent it out in whatever form he sent it out in. I didn't know who it went to, when it went to them, the gist of all that surrounded, but I did see the document, and that could happen to me. That could happen to anyone else serving on the board. It was not a good look for Washington County.
Yeah, I think the fear is that many people have is that our elected officials, not just here in Washington County, but some have said just across the state, that people are just looking for yes-men, yes-women to follow through with whatever it is that leadership wants. So we will certainly be following that. All right, at the October meeting, one of the last things that the county judge said was that the proposed zoning ordinance, it was sent back to County Services in that September meeting. County Services will have a combined meeting with Finance November 12th. That's not on the website yet, but that was stated at the October meeting. What would you suggest Washington County residents do from now until November 12th to learn more, to share their opinion? What would you suggest they do?
Get educated. Call your JP's. Go online and print this document out like I did. Make sure you got a ream of paper and your ink is full, and have the time to sit down and look through this thing. I think you'll be shocked at what you see. I don't think it's something the majority of Washington County residents are going to want. They'll need to make their own decision off of what they read and the questions they ask, and be vocal about this. Come to a public meeting and speak. We're here to listen, and hopefully we won't be cut off at the next meeting and abruptly walked out on when we still have some questions remaining.
Lisa, thank you so much for coming in. Thank you for your service to Washington County these past four years. I know that there are probably many people who would love to see you continue. I know that there are probably many people who would love to see you continue a new term. We'll see if that works out, but really appreciate all that you've done in looking out for the rights of Washington County residents.
I try the best I can. Thank you for your time and I really appreciate the opportunity to have served Washington County these past four years. It's meant a lot and I hope I've done the right thing and voted the right way in whatever people's eyes they deem.
Yeah. Well, we'd love to have you back on Conduit sometime soon, so.
Thank you so much for your invitation today. It's nice to meet you.
Me too.[1790.82][1790.82]